Or it's in the calendar.
Oh, that that works. Did you refresh?
I'm gonna refresh it.
Too positive. Are we starting with the high school today?
We are.
All right.
Joe? I was waiting for my reporter.
Oh, gotcha.
Where do you want me to stand?
Yeah, where do you want?
Speakers might have kind of his here. Okay.
You're fine.
Okay, thanks for not making me go to the very front. Hi, Tore. Kaylin Cross, proud principal of the pirate ship. I first want to start out by just saying thank you for yesterday. I know things were a little bit different than they've been in the past. We made a couple of changes on the parade. But I just want to say you had a great time. We're really thankful for your involvement. And that's our first kind of thing I want to brag about is that parade. We had thirty seven entries at the beginning of the day yesterday. End of the day, we had forty five.
Wow.
And so as you saw, a lot of community organizations, new businesses, a lot of students represented. And so I also wanted to say thank you to this administrative team for making sure students are having a great time and were represented well. After the parade yesterday, we came back to the high school and we had our traditional he-man volleyball game and our powder puff games. And just a lot of students involved in those things as well. And so I just want to shout out to our leadership students, our our football team and our volleyball team who take on these other teams and kind of mentor them through the this very short kind of two practice season. And I want to thank the following adults for their various involvement in activities. Denise, I will send this list to you. Lisa Robin, our leadership teacher. Yaneth Garcia, our student manager. Elde Pantoja, who is our actually attendance specialist, but also helps with our game management. Anna and Jim Redding, who they do all the things. Jordan Ruiz, who last minute saved my bacon and flipped some burgers because I sent out twenty four hundred postcards saying we were going to have a barbecue. So then we had a barbecue because Jordan is awesome. Chris Gallegos, who also helped in those efforts. David Ford, who's our swim coach, our construction teacher, and also an amazing concession stand just runner who's great. Breezy Chapman, who tried to teach me everything she knows about running eight years worth of parades. And and just did a great job just encouraging and making sure we had things done. Brenda Seeley, who also did the same. Aaron Hall, who made sure that we had all the things we needed as far as like police presence and road closures and also game help after the parade. Cameron Noble, who's the voice of the pirates and was our announcer. Ramiz, Mr. Ramiz, who was our judge and made it from Eugene back to Phoenix, just in the nick of time to make sure that that happened. Alejandro, who is our Valescas, who is also one of our student managers. And then also Josephala, who documented the whole thing and made a beautiful video about it. Also, wanted to shout out to the city of Phoenix Public Works and our fire department, who also just like stepped in and made the whole thing run smooth for smooth. So we're kind of all parade and homecoming right now. And we'd love to have you join us for the game tomorrow kickoff is at six. And if you wanted to hang out for the dance, we wouldn't be mad either, but we also understand that it's not your scene. That's all from high school.
Thank you.
The dance floor might be fun.
Yeah. Casey, can I have you stand actually up here just so the board can see you without craning? Thank you. Sorry, Kayla. We're thinking you're the best.
All right, so it's good?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, Warren Casey Omsdahl, principal at Salem Middle School. I'd echo, I mean, I did not put anything on, but just being a part of the parade for the first time for me, I have nothing to compare it to Kaylin, but I thought it was awesome. So you did great. And just I feel like we had a lot of last minute planning on just the middle schools end. And so seeing the staff at the end that were there like bigger, better next year and already coming up with ideas and excitement around it was cool to see. We have a new mascot that I sweated through during it. And I just, there's been a lot of excitement. We have kids voting on what the name of the mascot will be and we're going to bail that in a couple of weeks. And and it just, yeah, just kind of the school pride, school spirit and trying to get eventually the goal of some students that are the mascot and getting them to run that responsibility to be at game events and things like that. I've talked about this program before, but web. It's where everyone belongs and it's the eighth grade leadership that really is mentoring and taking on sixth graders. This last week, we're doing some attendance kind of initiative incentives for our sixth graders and our eighth grader web leaders have just kind of taken it upon themselves of being the kind of voice in that checking in with students. They're bringing like different treats and all kinds of things to get them there. And some of the feedback, like I know we, you know, sixth grade can be hard. It's hard transition and seeing some of the kids saying like verbalizing that the reason that they're lacking middle school so far is their web leader. And so it's like everything that I want it to be, and I hope that that continues to grow. I want to give a shout out to our custodial team this last week or this week. We had custodial appreciation day and I think for Steven, Anna and Mike, the things that they do day in and day out to make sure our school was clean and safe. I just don't think that they get recognized enough and I I appreciate getting to know them. And then last but not least, Lori Evans, I will call her an instruction coach every time. I'm sorry, you know, that's not her official title. It's but that's what I think of her as. But she with our bulldog booster class, our intervention class that we've rolled out this year. She has just supported our teachers so much in that intervention and providing our students with what they need. Our kids need extra help and she's been such a support for our teachers in that. And that's they've been vocalizing that too, which is great, but I just wanted to honor her. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Borish Shonishla, principal at Phoenix Elementary School. I have your notes, all of stuff, what they're saying. But yeah, the parade was amazing. I just want to give a shout out to Wendy Duffy, Lori Delgado and Zoe Boils for really spearheading the decoration of our parade when he secured the the rafts from the Digo Creek who are families of Phoenix. So it was just what a great event. It just really was. Also in the parade, you might have seen our mascot. And so I wanted to give a big shout out to Andrew. He's our lead custodian, also the school mascot. So he's just, he's not only keeping our school safe and clean and just responsive to everything. He's he just steps up and just wants to be a part of it, part of it all. So we're excited about that. He'll be joining us in our first assembly tomorrow. Our other custodian, our not custodian is Malcolm. He's going to be playing an original piece tomorrow at our assembly. So they've just done a really good job of integrating themselves into the fabric of our community. And so he enlisted the support of his wife, who's also an IA at our school and a bunch of second grade kids who will be singing his original piece. So it should be a beautiful assembly tomorrow. A couple of other things I wanted to mention is that we have Manny Ball for the first time at P E P E S, but we have almost fifty kids out. And it's a huge effort on Christian C. Carros's part and Laura Mallett. We have a lot of kids who've never participated in a sport. So we have girl teams and boys teams and it's just a big, we've never had this many kids staying after school at P E S. So we're really excited about that. And then finally, I want to, we have a new partnership with EDU staff and they're the ones who are creating the support for our substitutes. And we've had an amazing group of substitutes. On Thursday, we ended up having two trainings. And so we ended up with almost half of our staff gone. And I, you know, I invited Brent over and said, check this out. Like you couldn't even tell that half of our staff were gone. The school ran so well. So our whole staff has just done a great job of preparing our kids, getting them used to routines. And so the students did a great job, but then the EDU staff is really responsive and they sent some really great people to Southwood. Just wanted to give you an update on that partnership.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm L, principal over at Talent. I can say good to the custodial appreciation for bringing that up. We love our custodians, obviously. They do so much more than just keep them as plain. So it's really nice to be able to recognize them on their day on Wednesday. And the parade was awesome. I will say I'm the only one with a real life mascot. I've been winning my whole life for this moment. Padrina is the like the kindergarten family. So I think Padrina is going to be with us for a couple of years. Maybe I'll get to write him one day. But that was so fun. So thank you to Kevin and the team for all their efforts. I did want to show you some updates on some professional development that we've been doing today. We got to bring down a consultant group, Ed X, which is Educational Excellence. They work with schools on how to refine PLC practices. And so they spent the morning with administration and coaches and leadership talking about our vision and what's going well and where we want to kind of put more wind in the sails of our collective efficacy efficacy through PLC work. So they work with us and then they deploy to our elementary schools this afternoon and did an initial training with our staff, which we had so much fun at TES. We were laughing and talking about personality types and how it impacts teams. And so that was great. Also, last week, we engaged in our first core review of the year. You know, Shawna did as well and kicked it as well yesterday, I believe, too. So just looking at our data and we're, you know, through our improvement map that Javier had shared before, through literacy development, we we adopted a new process for looking at some of our reading data and thinking through that. And so we've been, we tried that on last weekend, this week, and it just was really precise. And that's based upon the work that we're doing with the ORT I T I, the Oregon Response to Intervention Instruction or Instruction and Intervention. And so just really excited about the the momentum we're getting with this work. And and then on that same day, Javier took a reading specialist up to Salem this week to a conference that really dives into what we would call tier two interventions. And so those are the interventions that happen within a classroom to kind of just give some of those kids a little extra practice. So we've got lots of learning going on and things are going super well at Talent and across the elementaries.
Thanks, Heather. Good evening, everyone. Kent Fuller, principal at Orchard Hill. While it might not be, it might not be the best form to correct a colleague at a board meeting. Heather, you're not the only one with a live mascot. If you were at the, if you were at the parade, you saw hockey Balboa. Lori Fuller brings hockey Balboa to life. So I want to thank. There we go. But I I do want to, I do want to recognize Lori. It is, it's hot in there and it's hard work. But and Lori has dawned that costume several times back in August for the kindergarten open house and at her open house and yesterday. And and she does a great job and really cares that the kids have have fun with that. So I want to thank her. Diane Wolf, Holly Swift, and a wonderful PTA parent, Laura Birmingham. They were all responsible for getting the trailer, the truck and the decorations, the candy, getting kids there and making all that happen. So I really appreciate their efforts. If you know Kathy Holman, Kathy is an aide at Orchard Hill. She's retiring and tomorrow is her last day. And I really want to thank her publicly. She really welcomed me last year as the new principal and was an integral part of some survey activity that we did at Orchard Hill. And I was talking with her today, reflecting on her years at Orchard Hill. And she said her favorite thing was doing small group remediation work with reading kids. And I think, I mean, I just think the world of that. I admire her a lot because that's essentially what we're all there to do is help kids grow academically and socially. Last year, or lastly, I want to thank my colleague Tiffany Lambert. At the beginning of the year, we have some new students and they become a little bit needy as the shininess of the school year wears off. And Tiffany's been a great help. And I always feel after conversation with Tiffany, I can be, you know, honest and upfront with her. And I always feel like I'm going to leave a conversation a better principle for Tiffany. Thank you. Mr. Zoff. Thanks.
Hey, everybody. Aaron from P T R A. Just a couple of things. First, our in-person Friday steam classes are off to a really good start. We have a room full of kindergartners, third graders attending, participating in art and science projects. This month, they've done a guided drawing, painted leaves, that art in the park and oil pastel project based on the famous Kandinsky circles. Never knew what that was, but I found out this last Friday. The original is in a Munich museum, apparently. Tomorrow, they're doing dry resist watercolors. I also don't know what that is. The combined art and science project. I want to thank Maddie for heading our steam classes. She's doing a great job integrating things for all ages. So that's pretty cool. And additionally, kind of with my, from my attendance hat, I want to thank our attendance specialists at every school as well as our administrators. We had a meeting earlier this week regarding our attendance. And so every, every school now has a plan in place for how to kind of attack attendance with a data-driven approach. We're going to have some goals that are targeted with each school is going to have a way to measure it to determine its impact and to see whether it's working or not. So we're really trying to get focused on attendance this year and do a better job. So I'm excited about coming back to you guys toward the end of the year and sharing how that's gone for us. So that's it.
Good evening. Amy Hans here, food service. And I echo everybody about the parade and extremely thank Kaylin and the high school for letting the high school food service team be part of it. We always have a ton of fun, but every year I try to challenge myself, you know, what can we send besides just candy for everyone? Last year, we did some popsicles, but I think this year, the little cuties were a huge success. So we're going to like triple that next year because it was fun. So I also, I have to thank Randy Kirkland. He actually helped us out in food service the other day when I not only was short my driver, but both of my other backup drivers were out that day. And him and John asked him and he just stepped in and he saved the day for us and helped get product to the elementary so that, you know, we could make sure lunch went off successfully. I also want to invite and tell everybody that we are actually getting together a menu nutrition advisory committee here with, we're currently recruiting. Joe's been helping me send out some information as long, as well as the principals and office managers, but hoping to get, you know, a little bit of everybody involved in this committee. We're going, we're currently planning on meeting here at the high school on Tuesday, October fifteenth, four to five P M. But that's just the first meeting and that can lead to however the committee wants it to lead, you know? We're just really looking for some input from, from everybody, community, board members, principals and students and families. So hopefully we get a nice group together and kind of kickstart that advisory off. Then, and there is also some flyers in your board packets about that meeting and where you can sign up if you're interested. And then last, I just want to call out that October fourteenth to October eighteenth is actually National School Lunch Week. In your board packet, you should also have a flyer with all of our lunch times at all of the schools. And I'd love to invite you all to stop in to one or two, you know, or five, come to lunch every day that week. Pick a different school, but come and have some lunch. If you feel like it, let me know when and I'd love to meet you there. But definitely want to invite you for free lunch during National Lunch Week. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. And I'm going to invite Laura Latham from one of our teachers who's also the PTA president to come share during this part of the meeting as well. And then we have some, something on the agenda to discuss potentially revising the agenda going forward to include PTA. So welcome, Laura.
Oh, okay. Make sure.
Yeah, that's fine. We're, thou will find you.
That's really.
Yeah.
Love it. Right. Been an professor. I haven't been in middle school in a while. So hi, everyone. I'm Laura Latham. I'm the president of the Phoenix Talent Education Association. We have, and thank you to my golden board for having me. It is our goal, although we've been a little slow getting ourselves started here this year because of just how getting this new school year started. It's our goal to have either myself, our vice president, Rosario Medina, or one of our building representatives at each of your meetings. And if not, we'll make sure we send a little blurb over to Denise to be able to share with y'all. Because whether to have to speak or other to just attend, it's really important to us to continue the relationship that Phoenix Talent Education Association has with our district and with our school board members. Been feeling especially in the last couple of weeks, we've been reading things a lot and we've been feeling very grateful for our school board, especially. And have, we wanted to make sure that we have a voice that you guys can hear directly from us. It's so great to be able to hear from our administrators and who are also in our buildings and be able to share with you. So our members are getting going with the school year this year and, you know, really start, I feel like everyone I'm talking to is just now really starting to feel like they're getting their feet under them. And it's been, you know, kind of a whirlwind. We're really excited to see the progress that our preschool program is making. You know, on the union side of things, we've, our members have really gotten involved with the elections that are coming up. We've noticed a lot of folks signing up to do phone banking and canvassing as well as helping out with, you know, like text banking, postcard writing. And so it's been really cool to see both here in our state and also with the national races, people are getting involved. So we've been really excited about that. We've had some great discussions. We had our first labor management meeting of the year with our labor management folks with Jessica and Callie as well as Aaron and Sean, who I just thought I didn't know for everyone. And Aaron. And so it was really great to just get ourselves started and kind of start talking about bargaining. If you guys may be thinking, wait a second, we just settled a contract. You're right, we did. We did in November, but we are here again. And so it's good to really start the conversation around our upcoming negotiations to discuss when starting those and kind of getting some of our dates on the calendar and sorting out some committee work. So it's nice to see that the ball is kind of getting going as far as our upcoming negotiations will go. And so we're looking forward to working with y'all on that. Let's see, any other update? I have a personal update, so it's my little personal privilege point. I've been really honored and like grateful with a lot of support that I've received. I'm running for Oregon Education Association Vice President. And I've had such great support from our administrators as well as the D O administration as well as our school board members. And so been very grateful for that, just on a personal level. I am hoping to be able to represent Phoenix Talent and all of Southern Oregon in this role. The election is in April and so I'm looking forward to continuing to campaign. And I've just been really grateful for the support of our district and being able to hopefully, fingers crossed, represent all forty two thousand educators certified and classified in community college for the Oregon Education Association. So I'll keep you posted, but I've been really grateful for all the support. So and if you ever have any questions or need anything, you have my email. And so we're having a great year so far. Excited to be back with kids.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Anything from the board? You talk about the parade, Sarah. I know you want to.
I just want to echo, just want to get you back off Casey's comment. I have nothing to compare it to because not every district pulls this off or supports their families and students with something fun like this. So no, you don't really see it anywhere in that. So one of the things that makes me into talent will just hurt so fantastic. So kudos to all of you for a really fun community engagement event. So fun to see lots of faces in the crowd along the way. Mrs. Richie was there. All of my kids were great teachers. So fun. So anyway, great job, everyone.
I'll just echo, always really fun. Rick and I get to hang out in the truck and Rick reminds me not to go too fast, so. All right. Next item is citizens comments. Do we have anyone in person that would like to speak before the board? You're only attendees. Okay. And do we have anyone online who would like to speak? Okay. If you would like to, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll move on. So some attendees today. Okay, great. Next is superintendent report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Chair Campbell. I do have something to compare it to the parade. And I think this is one of the best ever. It was, I agree, a beautiful night, so much participation, so much more community members along the parade route and just having a great time. And you're right, people that you haven't seen for years and years come out and support the Pirate Country Parade. I think somebody said Pirate County Parade on the news. Well, we took over the whole county. But just, I mean, it's a lot of work shutting down roads, highways. I mean, it's not easy and just thank you for all those people that had a hand on that. In your packets, you may remember pre-bond or after we passed the bond, a big part of that was safety and security of our facilities. Prior to any of the work, we had Secure Check LLC, which is Ernie White Men, do an assessment of four of our buildings and then was had a hand in helping develop safety measures for this building as well. I had comprehensive reports and we used a lot of those suggestions and things that he put in those reports to help secure our facilities. With the completion of Talent Elementary and Talent Middle School seismic and we are ready to kind of follow up on that. And so we have a contract that was a proposal from Secure Check in there. And we'll be working with him to see about doing an updated assessment to see how we've improved, but more importantly, to see if there's any spaces that we're vulnerable or can make additional safety recommendations and upgrades to our buildings. We're much better, we're much better off than we were five years ago in this district as far as safety and the things that we've done. But we know that's a continued effort. And so I'll keep you updated on that. And as you know, Ernie White Men is the expert locally and nationally. He speaks on school safety and is a longtime SRO in Bedford and for us actually in Talent. Today, the statewide assessment data was released. We have not, Joe has not received any media requests or anything like that. This is typically a quieter one. You guys got a report from Javier Del Rio and so had a little bit of an insight on the number. This goes into a little more detail. Joe's making us some graphs and stuff, so we'll send that out to you just on how, a little more detail on that. But you may see something out of the news. We need, we're looking at our extra comp positions in the contract and we'd love to have a school board member, if you would like to participate on that. We, we want one school board member to be able to look at those extra comp positions. And then Jessica and myself and James will also be on that along with the association. We'll talk to about to really kind of review those positions, see if, see if we're in line. And then if there's, and to kind of review all the positions that we have in there as well. So I'll probably send out an email looking for volunteers. We'll probably start those meetings here in the next few weeks.
What's the time commitment?
We should probably be able to do it in a couple of meetings. You know, we'll, we'll really kind of set the stage on what we want to do and then really kind of dig in and see where we are. So two or three, three meetings probably. I do want to let you know a couple of things on, based on the budget coming up. We, pers rates came out, yeah, last week and we're going to have a significant increase, about nine percent next year. Everybody's going to have a significant increase. We've, we've been very fortunate in this district with Yasmin's leadership and the leadership before in our business department to buy down some liability with some pension bonds. And we may have an opportunity to do that in the future, but you may have read some things in the paper about that, the pers liability for public entities with a pretty big jump next year. Comparatively, we're still doing okay, but it's going to be about a twenty three percent now or twenty two percent next year as opposed to thirteen percent there was this by any of them.
Do you have a dollar amount to assign relative to our budget?
We, Yasmin can, we can get some more information on that and see what that means and what that increases. Yasmin has anticipated this. The business managers have been really up to speed on this and we have our first council that have been sending out anytime they meet and whatever. So. Also, we're exploring, we talked about there's a second meal cost. As you know, we have a no charge lunch. There's some second meal charges. We've been reviewing some of those from some of our students. And I think we're going to have a, maybe even a recommendation to see what the total charge is about that in the district and see how we can support that. I know the board has informally kind of expressed the interest to say, hey, can't we just cover that as well? We'll get a dollar amount on that to see what that would be each year and and maybe see about how we can cover for this year, but budgeting for next year as well. So wanted to share with you on that.
I think that's a topic that we did have for discussion at the legislation. I was at one of the hearings and I can talk about that more, but I think that's something that we might want to advocate as well.
That good, good. And we may be a little bit ahead of the curve on that share what we are doing or no or.
I know. I like being ahead of the curve. Let's share. I know, I like being ahead of the curve. Let's share.
Couple of those things, November twenty-first is a a work session. Right now it's scheduled for six, but typically we do have a dinner. Um, and so we've moved those to five so we can talk about uh doing that. Um, I don't know if we have to formally do that, but uh we'll definitely notice that if we want to start at five with the dinner and then have our work session after that. Uh, finally, uh, along with custodial uh appreciation day, October is National Principal Month. And quite frankly, we uh simply have uh some of the best building administrators. Um, I think uh around, it's just everything you kind of do day in and day out. What you've just seen this week, what you've just heard from uh our building principals is simply amazing. Uh, so grateful for this admin team. Um, they often times don't get to hear how great they are. Um, but I just really appreciate them and we shared some goodies with them on Tuesday that included Advil and emergency. So I uh just really appreciate them and just want to give them a hand in order.
That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions for Brett?
Thank you. All good stuff. Very excited about the uh safety assessment. I think that's a positive step to make sure that we're constantly thinking about safety. Um, next is program report, SRO report. Sergeant Holes here, he's gonna just share a little bit about um the beginning of the year. Uh, and talk about kind of where we are and some new things we've kind of put into place and um. Absolutely, thanks for being here today.
Yeah, absolutely.
And in our building and with us.
Uh-huh. Uh, yeah. Thank you for allowing me back and supporting uh our chaos that we're. Our trying to do so. Um, yeah, and to piggyback off that parade.
Sergeant, you're welcome to sit in that chair if you'd like to. We could have done that, everybody, sorry. We'll know that next year.
There's no arms and everything, so. I didn't just notice the chair. Yeah, so to be, I mean, when it comes with that parade and stuff, um, we had a little bit shorter notice this year. Um, but it seemed to go from my end and my part, people might not think so, but I think my part's easy compared to what the staff at the high school have to deal with. Um, yeah, I just gotta shut down roads and approve contracts and get out all this other stuff. But to me, it's so much easier than what. Kudos to them and and even from my administration on the on the Fleet Farm side, they 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 agreed that things went really, really smoothly from our end. Yeah, and so that was great. Um, yeah, so we uh implemented a program, the I Love You Guys Foundation Program. Um, to basically kind of generalize our um. Secure and lockdown program district wide, so that way we're not um doing it differently in every school. So this way we all have kind of program, we go off the same paperwork, we go off the same plans. Um, so it makes it all the same, which is a lot easier. For those of you, I don't know, that aren't familiar with the I Love You Foundation, it's basically a crisis response um program. Um, it was implemented in two thousand and six as a result by a family that lost a child in that in a tragedy in Colorado of. Their their daughter was lost in a, in a, in a shooting. And so that's, that's basically what's what what that foundation does. So it, it uh um, it's a research-based best practice program. And so it's implemented in over fifty thousand um in different entities across the country. They provide training, they provide a lot of um. Like posters and 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 stuff like that, and it's all free of charge. So uh, yeah, so that's, that's the I love you part, that's what we've got going. We've, um, I know at the high school, we've already got, we've begun our um. Our drills, we've got them planned out for most of the the rest of the year. Um, we had an event last year uh in a Medford school that brought up uh an important point. Um, about identi- kept identifying classrooms from the outside of the building. We had an event where officers inside were trying to communicate with officers outside to go to a certain room number. Problem is, there was no way to identify those those rooms from the outside. So um we've ordered um. Vinyl numbers to be placed on the outside of the windows and the lower floor of the school. We'll, we'll probably, I believe Portrait Hill has already completed part of, they're a part of it and will probably continue to implement that through the the rest of the district. Um, what else? Uh, there is a mention here about threat assessments. Um, I think Tiffany would be the best, but uh, where'd she go? Um, so far, so good though, uh, with that stuff. Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of what I have for that.
Can I say a question about, because I I had the opportunity to hear from actually the the father of the girl who was killed. And maybe some of you were at um the school board conference that year when he presented. But one of the biggest things that he talked about is reunification. And that can be beneficial in the event of a tragedy, certainly, we hope we never have to experience that. But just in the event of any kind of emergency or even a a um, even a false alarm or a. Um, because I think what happens is, you know, even if there's a lockout or a lockdown, the word gets out and then you have parents kind of flooding to the school. And so I wonder um on the, on the reunification side, I think it's great that from, you know, from a, from a law enforcement perspective, we're getting consistency and clarity between all the buildings. But at what point, and I know it's tricky, but at what point do we start involving families in that conversation? So that it's known district by any event of emergency or a false alarm or a lockdown or a lockout. Here are our procedures and how do we kind of bring them into the fold there?
Yeah, that, I I think that's a challenge if you ask any district that's uh um. You know, reunification in in the event of some tragic event is gonna be a challenge. But done really kind of practicing that, we have guidelines about reunification. And I love you guys, that is really clear about reunification process. Uh, I know Ken has talked about and and Aaron has talked about really kind of doing some sort of a simulation with our buses, with practicing, with people uh setting up some uh, you know, basically the reunification process. Um, and looking at doing a drill this year, you know, Medford did that big drill in twenty-twenty-two, I think. Um, and they planned it out for two years and they still and had everything dialed in. And they still say the reunification was, but you know, it's kind of a cluster, so. Um, but practicing, understanding, having those go kits, having the uh correct information in the go kits as far as rostering and all the documents that we need to reunify families with um. Their kid is, is, yeah, is huge. I, you know, he would that, uh, he was here last spring and some of the law enforcement came to the small and center uh to do that. Um, and God forbid something happens, but identification is is a, it takes a long time as well if there are um casualties. So um, and can, you know, he, they recommend, I think everybody has kind of a lanyard ID, so it is, um, so. There's a lot to it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think um you could put reunification procedures in a in a handbook, but parents are gonna look at that. You know, yeah, um, so making sure that our staff is solid in that and is, I think, a really, really good first step. And then just, I I wonder with that safety um proposal. What does the involvement of our current SROs look like with with Ernie for that?
Yeah, I mean, they looked over the proposal and they'll be involved, they'll be interviewed uh like they did like they were the last time. So um, we're really involved. And I think um, you know, both of them know um Ernie very well, feel comfortable. And I mean, they'll be at a thorough um discussion about kind of, hey, here's where we are. Honest about some vulnerabilities and then, yeah, yeah, so they're great now too.
Now imagine when we get the results, that's a shared discussion that we have for addressing things. It's great, awesome. Any questions for Sergeant Hall? Sorry, I kind of jumped in there. Well, I usually don't do that. Not first, not first anyway. I usually let you go first, Sarah. Go ahead.
I just wondered, with multiple events now, really excited, Manny Balls up and going in as a district, kind of coming, coming out of um. Out of COVID and different programs, just ensuring that there's enough staff or support at the buildings for after-school or evening type of activities so that it's not a full day and then a full evening on a full week, which. Yeah, this week is. And so how, how are are we looking ahead to um manage some of that?
Right, a lot of that just coming down with with staffing, both for us, you know, and and for the school and and for us. Until we get to that full kind of staffing, yes, we do have a plan in place. Um, when I was scheduled to go to patrol, we had a plan in place to actually relieve our full day SRO with um supplement staffing or the after-school events to kind of supplement some of that. Right now it's kind of tough, but it's okay, I'm making it, it's up there. Um, but yeah, no, there there definitely is those things and and as the school gets bigger and the people, we begin more people. Um, and there, but the reality is, we actually. With the amount of schools that we have, we're doing pretty good. When you consider the number of SROs. And I'll use, you know, the county, well, the county's not really fair, but like even Medford, the the number per capita SROs they have for their students is by far more than what what we're looking at even with, even with our two SROs. Um, so we're, we're doing pretty good. County has one person for twenty-seven schools and that's and that's.
Wow.
And so we, our program and and what we're doing and and the availability we have to our students and our staff is, is is pretty good. Um, from my standpoint, so um, yeah, so.
I also want to give kudos to Erica who did a lot of the kind of district um uh presentations and really kind of getting digging into I love you guys and kind of standardizing them. So Erica, thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, I will say one thing when you, when you talked about that kind of post-crisis reunification, that was everything we really kind of, that was one of those areas that really helped us implement that whole I love you guys program because it gives you step by step and it's all based off of real life stuff. It's all, it's all as a result of of different events. Um, and so which makes it um best practice and it and it gives you all the paperwork you need. It gives you everything um to 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 get you through that that process. So and it's the only one I know that that does that.
It continues to be updated. It's already been updated based on new events and new scenarios and things, so it's pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Terrible that we even have half this guy, but in reality, better, better to be prepared. Great. Any other questions? Thanks for the update.
Of course.
Yeah, and you got to sit down, sorry, again, everybody. Okay, um, next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Information and discussion, legislative OSBA update.
Um, I am just organized because I have been so busy today, but um. So Sarah's gonna help me, I think. So for school lunches, uh, back, I was at a, I went up for pace on Monday. I don't even know what day it was. I think it was Monday. I went up for pace and they said, hey, there's some hearings at the Capitol, would you like to go? And then pretty soon it turned into me being at the Capitol to like five o'clock. So um.
It'll threaten you with a good time.
So, yeah. But um, so as they're, they were talking about the school lunches and there is. So basically the hearing was like fifteen minutes of all these work groups throughout the summer so that the legislators could have data so that they can write their bills based on the data or the work groups was the theory. Now, I don't know if it's a hundred percent off the data, but you know, they've got the data. So one of the, one of the things was school lunches and um I have it written down somewhere, I have no idea, but if you want the data, let me know. There's, I think, sixty-seven schools in the state that do not get full free and reduced lunches. So it is someone's goal at the state Capitol to um do free and reduced lunches for every school. Um, I'm not, I don't have all the data, so I'm not sure. My question is why do these schools, do they not qualify or is it a choice? Um, we have some really small schools in Oregon and um with like one to ten, I mean, there's a handful that have one to ten students. And so I'm not even sure having a school lunch program for three students would be. I mean, it might cost more money to get that up and going than it would be. So I don't know, but anyways, in those conversations, questions of having meals paid twice. Questions of um how much food is being wasted, questions of are the kids liking their meals? And so one of the representatives, and I'm gonna be effronced, sent out an email, and I haven't sent it out to the region because it just came out. Um, but one of the representatives, who's a school board member, you might all know who I'm talking about. Highly recommended that all school board members go in to their um. Their lunchrooms and see, so that when we have these discussions um coming up for legislation, we know we can advocate for what's best for our district. If we're in the school cafeterias, we know more than not. So um, also OSBA, and I will send this out, wants any pictures, wants any stories. We really want to support like school um, school board members going in. A lot of, sometimes there's frustrations of, you know, can school reports go into the, into the schools? And this is a great opportunity where you can go in, you can see what's going on, you can, you know, sit next to some kids, talk to them, see what kind of, what everyone's favorite lunch is and just have some fun. So I will send that out. Um.
We got, we got an email about that.
You did?
I saw this weekend.
Oh, perfect.
The MOP sent out. PA is saying we should.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Okay, then I'll have to send that. Um, one last thing for me to do. Um, so you probably also got an email about the rural caucus. So I wanted to remind everybody.
There's two meetings, right?
Yes, I want to remind everybody that there's two meetings for the rural caucus. And we don't need scholarships, but if you know of a school um locally that needs a rural school um scholarship to go to the convention, let them know they can apply, I think they have to apply soon. And so there's the business meeting and then there's a workshop on the rural caucus. Uh, Sarah and I had a meeting today, thankfully Sarah reminded me, um, with SOESD about the um. Legislative roadshow and last year we kind of um modified it for our region. And we're planning on modifying it for our region a little bit this time. Uh, OSBA has a lot more uh information to give us since we're gonna have those three resolutions on the um agenda. Cause we're all be voting on three of the resolutions, which will be do increase uh the pride caucus and by law changes. And so there's probably lots of questions about that. So we want to make sure that we leave time for that and then also leave time for um updates about next year's legislation. We have two new legislators, um legislative advocates, Adrian and Ephraim, and they have some great new ideas. And I'm excited to hear from them. Sarah?
Nothing, we, we just had that meeting with um Scott and Jessica, like Dawn said, and really wanting to have some good conversations about what's happening in the upcoming long session. So looking to see what, what is pre-five, what the, what are different partner, Costa and OSBA and um EST leadership are all looking at um. Hot topics for the upcoming session and how that impacts each of our districts. Um, Medford is the only district in our region that is not a rural school. So really looking at um through the rural um lens and um also uh inviting someone from the color caucus to, to come and speak. We have a representative on EST board from the color caucus, so hoping to hear from, from them and then Dawn and and some other ones. So hoping to have a really great conversation and remember how we can advocate um for bills in the upcoming session. Come together as a region and as for our district. So looking ahead to that. Hopefully everybody's letting Denise know if you can go or not.
I did today.
And Nancy has her hand up.
Oh, Nancy.
Hi, how do we define rural schools? What is the uh population number or how is rural schools defined?
Um, that was a year-long question. That's, you have a good definition for that.
I don't have it on the map. Yeah, I don't have it on top of, yeah, there's a map. And basically, we had a really hard time defining rural schools. So there's actually three, three, four, perhaps, there's three ways you can be a rural school. And then you can also apply to be a rural school, which grants. which Grants Pass did. Um, and Sarah's looking it up right now, but there's a math. One, one has to do with uh, student population, one has to do with like area population of the district. And one has to do with, I can't remember because it was a year and a half ago, but I can get you that information um.
I'll find you.
In the meantime, I think it's on the OSBA website, but I can get you more of that information.
Nancy, you're, you have to give a score update when you're going to speak.
Um, the varsity gate, so the JV one, zero, zero, and then the varsity game just started. And there's zero, zero.
Okay, if there's a score change, just drop it in the chat.
I will, I will.
JV team won.
Okay.
So Nancy, here's the answer to your question. People eligible for membership in the rural caucus, are those elected school board members who serve on a school board with a district population density less than two hundred people per square mile and or less than twenty thousand people population within their district boundaries? And all school board members or EST boards are eligible and you can um, then appeal which um, Grants Pass did and was um,
Accepted.
Accepted. That's the word into. So that's the definition that OSB came up with for rural.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you. Uh, next is committee reports. Which committee are we talking about here? I see a La Clinica update, but there, there is, and that was actually Kelly put that in there just based on um, you know, accessing.
Can I, can I give a, a brief?
Please, and you may sit if you like.
Um, I actually uh, would love to give a couple of updates on several things. I will talk sort of fast so that I don't take up too much time, but I, I would love to give you some updates. I'll start with um, EDI Advisory Committee. I think if possible, this might be a great place in the future for our EDI Advisory to give an update. Um, we're kicking off, I mean, in this particular piece of the agenda. Um, we're kicking off this year. It's been a little crazy this fall. So we're a little bit later start. Our first meeting will be October fourteenth. Uh, we have twenty eight or so people uh, invited. We will do something similar to the student reps for the school board and ask for student rep applications for our, for our participation from, from PHS as well. Um, we have talked about this several times, but this coming year we'll really try to model more following like the budget committee. Um, we'll ask for, we'll ask for a chair and a vice chair and really check just more and more in line with, with other school board committees. Um, I, in that role, I'll be more of a facilitator or just a liaison and the, the, the committee will start to uh, take on more of, of that role. So super excited about that. Again, just great representation and great um, interest. So really excited for another year. Um, community care, if I could do a shout out to community care, we have, I'm not sure if I officially welcomed Nubia Pineda. She's joined our community care team. She is based at T E S. And just jumping in with Katie McCormick and Laura Mallett. So just shout out to her um, enthusiasm. We have the family resource center that's still up and rolling. We have established the last Friday and every month from two to four will be an open community care option, or opportunity for families. We're running about thirty families. Um, every time we have the resource center open, about thirty, thirty plus families. Um, and that grows each time. We gave away, we also had a special event for school supplies and we served about sixty families. And not individuals, but sixty families at our school supply event and continue to do kind of one, one by one school supplies, continue to have school supplies for kids and families that might need them. And so that has just been awesome. We're very excited about all of that. And hot off the press are, we, we have a community care vehicle as of today.
I saw it.
Uh, so just thanks to all the people that made that happen. I'm really excited for that opportunity. Actually have, have it being used tomorrow morning to help a student get to school that has some transportation struggles and won't have transportation routed for a couple of days. So that's the exact reason that we, that we did the vehicle. So super excited about that. I have a big uh, update for preschool and lots of shout outs and names included in my notes. So I just want to give a huge shout out to our whole preschool team. It has been a very busy fall for preschool. Um, and, and quite a few little bumps and twists and turns in the road. And I just want to give huge kudos to all of our preschool team. They've worked so hard. They're, they are, are pretty, pretty tired at the end of every day, but they have just worked so hard. I couldn't be prouder and I'd like to name them all. Rosario Medina, um, Diana Martinez Lopez, Berenice Munoz, Sarah Bello. Two new staff members joined us recently, Donna Morales and Emily Copley. Donna and Emily are two new, um, and we have some extra help to help us get our feet under the ground. And then we have um, Grandma Rosie who actually is on tonight. Grandma Rosie has been there for the better part of two or three weeks too, um, and just been a phenomenal help for us. So just really trying to flood in resources and get our feet underneath us. Mary Martinen came over and visited and has offered some great support. An expert in lots of areas with our stuff that our kiddos could use extra support in. Um, John and our whole facilities team have done so many things to help get our campus looking beautiful and really helping just take care of little things that have come up that we weren't anticipating. Our cottage from David Ford and the camp, the construction team, the next time you go by, you'll see it's all set up with like just this beautiful red door and just a really lovely little addition to our preschool campus. It'll be a small office, an additional kind of workspace and storage for our team. Just everything's coming together. It's been a a little, little bumpy, but coming together. Amy and Suzie in, in food service have developed special preschool menus for snack and meals and just the list goes on. So thank you for all of that. And, and we have transitioned to a four day week. Um, in preschool with, with all of these changes, what we have discovered is that fifth day Fridays is really important for our team to dig in to developmentally appropriate practices, supporting families, understanding trauma in young children, um, playful learning experiences, all safety, all kinds of things that our team really needs um, time to dig in and understand and then meeting with families and consulting with specialists. So um, we think this is really the best move for our, our students and that transition started this week. Um, the last thing I would share is our school-based mental health grant. We're coming up on the end of year two, actually. That grant is an, is a um, calendar year. So the end of the year two is December thirty first of twenty four. Um, I included the La Clinica data. Um, it's a great, I, and I couldn't give a bigger shout out to La Clinica. They are such an amazing partner for us. The data that I attached there is all service data, including medical and other office visits. But it's also where we capture behavioral health and, and mental health and therapy visits with the clinic. And I just wanted to give some quick numbers with our partnership with La Clinica and as a result of our expansion grant. We have nine therapists, two skills trainers, one substance use disorder specialist here at the high school and one intern just in our five schools in Phoenix. That doesn't include our five licensed school counselors, our three qualified, uh, our three community care specialists. And nine staff members that are either have earned their qualified mental health associate or working toward it. So really proud of those numbers. That grant also is paying for some professional development for our school counselors, grad coaches and behavior specialists. That is focused on comprehensive school counseling, which is again, really wrapped around services for every student to receive services um, as they need them. That's my community update.
Any, any questions for?
Yeah, I want to say what a beautiful thing that we've created here, that you have created here with a huge term parent team. That we're not told to do these things. We saw a need and we went out and did these things. If you look at the members here, I mean, if we weren't servicing these students in the way we're showing up for them right now, I can't imagine. I mean, I know I when I was at one of the elementary schools like a week ago, we can have, I heard about some behavioral health issue, behavioral issues in class. And um, I know that's going on in the classrooms, but if we didn't have this partnership with La Clinica, I can't imagine. Um, anyway, I just, I'm so happy to see this and this needed to exist a long, long time ago. I'm just so glad. We're so blessed to have this partnership.
It's all about having the resource to teach kids in school and I give them the support they need so they can learn, right? And that's really what it comes down to.
No, but um, Nancy said that she loved the dedicated time that the preschool was giving. I'm assuming that's, she's, I love the dedicated time, but I'm assuming it was when you were talking about the preschool because that's when it popped up. So I just wanted to make sure.
I love, thank you, thank you Doc for reading that. And yes, it was, uh, I, I was talking about the dedicated time for the preschool.
He just appeared off my screen, but he just appears magically, just like me. It's magic. Um, so yeah.
And I just want to say, you know, when I, I was, as everyone was very excited that we took on this preschool and I think that's really, you know, an important step for, for our district and um, uh, when I heard we were going from five days to four days, I had some questions about that and, and I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. Uh, one, um, I appreciate our bravery and wanting to start with five days, even though everyone told you to start with four. Um, so I appreciate, you know, um, now, you know, the, the, um, the gumption to give that a try. I also appreciate how you are, um, you're providing care for the families for which that was a hardship. Um, and so I think there were five families. So I was pleased to hear about that, that we're not leaving families in a lurch. Um, and um, I felt better after a meeting with you to, to learn that really that Friday will help us get to a point where we can serve more kids and serve more kids um, for a whole week at some point. So I appreciate, appreciate everything you're doing. Yeah, thank you.
What, what is the next thing you're thinking about? I always like to ask you that. Do you have some big ideas about this? Um, where we could maybe grow in some area to help? Um, I, uh, I don't have a good one on that one. I feel like we have so many great initiatives. I mean, so many great things in the air right now and I, I think we can really focus on, I hate to say I don't have another idea right now, but I think we really need to kind of focus on strengthening what we're doing and making connections between everything that we're doing. I think in some ways it can feel like different, each piece is a bit different. And perhaps what we need to think about is how we can connect it all together so that all of the pieces are the same effort. Um, and we probably need a little time, you know, it feels like we did a whole bunch of things at once. And, 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 and rather than adding another thing, though we might need to at some point, we could bring things together.
Right. Thanks for everything.
It's a polite way of saying not, not, not the most right now.
Really appreciate our district being on this, kind of the front end of um, providing healthcare services and, and then just the funding that's come to help continue to meet the needs for our families, specifically in the mental and behavioral health arena where there's been so much need and not earned any resources. I'm really thankful for those, our families.
I will say late this afternoon, I don't think I read the whole article, but um, we got a shout out from Oregon Health Authority in their monthly newsletter um, around our partnership with La Clinica and Rebalancing Mentoring and doing some student screeners and things like that. So that is a great place where we can really kind of share that community wide.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks so much. Um, okay, next is Division twenty two report. Yeah, this is just a reminder, next meeting, we will have to open the meeting with the public report for Division twenty two. We're wrapping up those um, uh, reports we made, uh, we probably will say no on one, which will be the Mentor of Dignity Act because we don't have dispensers in every uh, bathroom at this time. And so um, but we'll, we'll um, share that at the next board meeting and we'll get that report. Thanks for that. When, um, when will the report be available for the board to review? We can send that out here pretty quick person next week, so you'll have time to. Yeah. We'll do, uh, we'll probably have the slides too as uh, done that will go through for the public meeting as well. Okay.
That's our day meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's the seventeenth, just in the description, this is the nineteenth, that's the seventeenth.
Anyway, oh, it does. I'm sorry. Okay.
That might have been a, yeah, copy of copy of last year's update. So, okay, great. Thank you. Looking forward to reading that. How many pages is it?
More than twenty two.
Twenty two times three. Um, okay, uh, let's see. Oh, PTA update, so um,
Sorry.
Yes.
I just had to say that.
Yeah, um, so we had a request from, from the PTA to add a, just a quick item on the agenda for them to share an update. Um, and from what I have gathered, that was historically something that was, that had happened um, in this district. It probably went away during COVID, I imagine, or something. Um, and so I didn't see a problem with it. Um, as chair, I could have just added it, but I wanted to bring it to you all and just make sure that was okay, that we just add a quick, and have it be just a sec, a separate line item from accentuate the positive so that it's a standing uh, standing item on the agenda. So any questions or concerns about that?
Is it? Nope. Nope, you go first. Hold on, Sarah. I was just going to say, um, and I should have thought of this, except I just actually thought of it ten seconds ago. Do we also want to invite the other um, association to be on the agenda as well?
That's a good point. Yeah, maybe we can.
I should have thought of this like eighteen days ago, but.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Can you reach out to, that'll be great. Yeah.
Can I maybe say once a month, instead of every meeting, we have a lot of different committee, meeting updates. So as we look at the time on the calendar, appropriate to maybe have it once a month or one, one week and one the other, just to.
Oh, yeah, good point. Okay. Yeah, I'll work with, with, um, with Laura and with our OSBA rep and talk. Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. So. The classified union. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. Anything else on that? Okay, um, student representative applications. Um, we got a number of them. Um, including, I think all three of our previous.
I know, that's going to be a little challenging.
Oh, my.
Yes, um, and then Sarah brought up a good point. Did we restrict that to tenth through twelve last year?
No, it's actually on the uh, application.
Yes, there's a.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Nan's been something.
Yeah. Yeah, the application says ten through twelve, she said, yeah. Um, so we do have a ninth grader who applied.
No.
No, 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 it's okay. I just, I think, I think we just let him participate. I wouldn't say hard, but good to know. What do you think?
I don't think, I think it's honor of the form, just letting this person know. I didn't look at the name because we already have
Yeah.
A lot of applicants, including three returning and it's there was a reason why we said ten through twelve to really protect that getting started, six credits by the end, right? Is that, well, six credits by the end of freshman year. And one of the reasons that we chose to do ten through twelve was to really start um, so that they could have the opportunity to really dig in academically in that freshman year. So I would like to stick with the reasons behind those decisions.
Okay, ma- maybe we could have that student come and be able to observe.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
I also wanted to say, um, I want to be cautious because another ninth grader may have read the form, not that this one did not and didn't fill out the form. And so I want to make sure that we're
Yeah, we should follow.
More, yeah, that we're fair because I don't want a, a ninth grader to go, well, I didn't even, I didn't even fill it out because it didn't say and
Yeah.
And so I just want to make sure that we're that, you know, yes. Yeah. I am a rule breaker, but I sometimes think we should not write the rules.
I just, that was a very big discussion last year, so we should be secure.
I also want to point out, it's in our board policy.
Right. Well, but even, even I'm, I'm a little But even even I'm I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I do wanna honor that student, but I also, you know.
Okay, thank you Caitlin.
Let me see if Nancy had.
Nancy, did you?
No.
We have score update.
No score update and.
Okay.
It didn't look like she had reached.
Okay, great, um. We are scheduled for a recess, I also think we can probably get through the action items very quickly, so. You are welcome to, I think we're gonna wrap this up here in a few minutes, so whatever you need to do, you are adults. Thank you for all your hard work this uh week and uh happy principals, is it? National principals month, okay.
Look, we gave you five minutes.
Hopefully you don't need that ad bill. Too soon, okay. Urgency is a good, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, uh so the first action item is uh. Interview and appoint budget committee applicant, so um we still just have the um. Application for Dwayne to remain on the budget committee, so we'll take that for action at the next meeting. Oh, but this is an action item now. Apparently, I I need to leave with that, okay. Goodness gracious, um. This is action out, yeah, I got, anyway, okay, do I have a motion to appoint Dwayne to remain on the budget?
I moved to appoint Dwayne Robinson to another three year term on the budget committee.
Thank you Polly, thank you Sarah, any discussion? Dwayne's great, we're lucky to have. Okay, we're gonna go this way, Rebecca. Rick? Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy, are you?
Yes, yes, I'm voting and I'm voting yes.
Voting from the stands of the soccer game.
Don't exclude me, Michael, don't exclude me, I'm here.
I'm just gonna realize that we're doing action items.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So someone was supposed to be on the EDI committee?
That's legally, so next year, we're gonna have to, yeah.
And we do have one more opening still that's still posted.
Yep. Um okay, the next item is a budget committee calendar. Do I have a motion?
Just just a note, we did push it back, usually it's first week of May, but we pushed it back one week as me had that suggestion. Um we are in a uh long session, so any extra days we can get. So just just that's a little bit of a modification from last few years, great.
I moved to adopt the budget committee calendar for the twenty five, twenty six school year budget. Second. But Nancy have it.
Okay, thank you Polly, thank you Nancy, discussion. Okay, I'm gonna go this way and say, Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick? Rebecca? I vote yes. Calendar's approved, next we have infection control and bloodborne pathogens. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve. I move to approve changes to the EBBAA infection control and bloodborne pathogens as presented.
Sorry, real quick, Nancy, can I have your vote on the last item, please, sorry about that. Budget calendar. The budget calendar.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that, okay, so Dawn moves. Thank you Polly, discussion.
Go with Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy?
But don't forget to include me this time.
No, I'm asking for your vote now, I'm going to you first.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you, and Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes, policy is approved. Policy GBE.
Oh Denise, I apologize. Who made the motion and you seconded it? Thank you, I appreciate that, you're gonna have to, you don't have to apologize.
All right, GBEB, do I have a motion?
I move to approve changes to policy GBEB, communicable diseases in schools as presented.
Thank you Polly, thank you Rebecca, discussion. Oh Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick? Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy's approved, next agenda is there for your review. That is the daytime meeting here at the high school at ten AM. Where we will interview student reps and we'll have our. State Division of No Two Standards uh public meeting.
Thank you for not having an executive session.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, we don't usually have an executive session, if for some reason we have to, typically we go in the exec after that.
Okay.
Towards the end, but we would, we, I mean, hopefully we don't, we don't have anything scheduled for that. Okay, but if something comes up, it'll be probably post meeting.
Do we know what class it's gonna be that's coming for the program report?
I don't think so.
I'm just wondering, it's different each year. But.
We'll find out.